Thank you very much. Good to see you all. Why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Let's take a moment to, of course, honor those that have paid the ultimate sacrifice, and of course, a little prayer for civility in our everyday life and political discourse. Thank you. Thank you very much. So we will start with some quick resident comments if there's anyone in the room. And again, folks, the rules here are you only get a chance to stand up if you're got to scoot, if you've got to scoot. So if anyone is here and would like to say anything, seeing no one, we will move on. Before we do, I just wanted to take a moment, and I think all of us on the board would agree with the extraordinary efforts that have been undertaken by various departments in preparation of our festival tomorrow night. The Ryder Cup Festival, John Wilton will tell you, has been an undertaking. His chief assistant, Maria Lardy, and John, and others have worked increasingly, not increasingly, just incredibly hard. But I also want to take a moment to thank John Barone and his team at DPW. The Buildings crew, of course, Andy and his team at REC, and of course Ralph, who has orchestrated this, and of course, Servini, who always keeps a close eye on things on Seventh Street, have done an absolutely spectacular job. And there are oftentimes when, you know, this this board has to face some very serious issues. As well, you know, it could be traffic, certainly it could be the St. Paul's, which is serious, the casino over at the Coliseum grounds, water. But this is fun, and the beautification efforts, I think, have been exemplary, and I don't know if anything ever close has happened before. So many, many thanks publicly, privately, to our entire team. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Ed, just give me 10 seconds.
Of course, Vin.
It's an easy one. I just want to follow up what Ed said. With you guys over the last 18 months, working with all of you guys, it's been a pleasure, and it's a team effort, and I think, and hopefully you guys feel the same way. You know, we're only as good as the weakest link, and we're here to help you guys to make the village a better place and to be more successful village as a whole. And you guys have done an amazing job, and I certainly, I think, can speak for the board like Ed. We appreciate it, and we'll continue to make the village a better place. But right now, it looks spectacular, and we should be a really, really proud, proud village to have one of the biggest international events right in our village with the teams. It's just incredible, and it's a great, it's a great time to be an American, and we're going to bring back that Ryder Cup come Sunday night. You can guarantee that. Thanks, guys.
And I know the commissioner's not here, inspector's with us today, but they've done an extraordinary effort to keep their eye on all things in the village. So why don't we move to the approval of minutes? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 10, 2025? All in favor? The ayes take it. Thank you. Now we'll move to comments by department heads, the administrator, council, et cetera, and we'll start with John Barone, please. DPW?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. DPW has one item on the agenda this evening. I direct your attention on the Public Works, item number five. This is a request to ratify, change order nine, to provide additional engineering services related to emerging contaminant removal at the Hilton Park Plant, which is wells 15 and 16, for $76,629. Funds are available in the airstripping tower and treatment and water fund surplus. During the initial construction, it was discovered the electric service needed to be relocated, and later a fiber optic line needed to be installed. The DPW superintendent at that time attended the field meeting and gave the verbal okay to proceed. Two weeks later, that superintendent left the village, and we're trying to address the matter now. The work completed, and the change order needs to be paid to close out this project. It was negotiated down for a much higher price. If there's any questions, happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Barone. Any questions? Thank you. We'll move on to the finance report. Ms. Irene?
Good evening. Item number one on the agenda, request is, board authorization is requested to appropriate $1,091.25 from the reserve for compensated absences for an employee who left village service. And that is all the finance items on the agenda tonight. Any questions?
There appear to be none. We will move on. Mr. Givinella from Buildings?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. The Building Department does not have any items on the formal agenda this evening. Just want to give the board an update on the performance for the month of August. The Building Department has issued 177 building permits, performed 251 building inspections, issued 163 certificates, addressed 57 complaints, and has collective revenue for the month of August of $253,000. That's all I have, Mayor. Be happy to answer any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Are there any questions for Mr. Givinella? All right, we've got a very quiet crew up here, which is, folks, you should, you should take advantage of that and be very happy. Mr. Hill, we are going to, we're going to pass on you for a second. One other quick thing, folks, we are going to have a presentation on the St. Paul's Field and the installation of the turf field. However, as you can see, Michelle Harrington is not here. She is going to be late. So we're going to go through the entire agenda, and I'm assuming it's going to be around 8:30 at the latest. I will ask Mr. Andy to give the presentation at that point. He does have some slides. So bear with us. We'll see what happens. But know that we have a very nice and thoughtful presentation coming. Inspector?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board. Sitting in for Commissioner Jackson, who is upstate at his monthly chiefs meeting. There isn't anything on the formal agenda, but I did want to just give you a few updates regarding the Ryder Cup.
Excellent.
For those that have been over there, you notice there are a bunch of security measures in place. We think that they're, they're working really well. I mean, the crowds will probably be this weekend, but we'll be ready. In preparation, we do, we've installed a bunch of new technology, of course, with the board's blessing. We have new cameras on Seventh Street that are working really, really well, and we're happy to have them. We've also installed temporary cameras and license plate readers in multiple locations along Seventh Street. We, one of the vendors was able to supply some test license plate readers that we have installed on Hilton and Cathedral. And just today, we were able to connect that to the joint operation within NASSO at Bethpage, so that even they can view those cameras, which can, you know, potentially be helpful as transportation is occurring. Yet another vendor has supplied us with a state-of-the-art trailer, solar-powered. There's, you know, we don't need a generator, and that's in the parking lot. And we're finding that very useful as well. All coordination with the county and state has been fantastic, and Commissioner Jackson is in constant contact with Commissioner Ryder and Major U迪s from the State Police.
Fantastic.
And so that's it for tonight, for my report. But if you have any questions, happy to answer.
Yes.
Mr. Treno?
Yeah, it looks better this way. What the village benefits from is the ability for looking forward. And one of the things that the police department put in an application for and got a grant, which includes drones, which, it's not your run-of-the-mill drones. It has a lot of capabilities that afford an eye in the sky, whether it's thermal, whether it's visual, whether it's camera. There have been, in my tenure, both recent and in the past, were a number of occasions in which there was a report of somebody breaking in. But the only way to find that individual was to send officers out and look. If it turned out to be at 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock in the morning, that became an arduous affair. However, with the ability to take a drone with a thermal image, you can run, but you can't hide. So that is one of the benefits that the village has. It presently has eight officers who are certified in using the drone capabilities, and it is, along with the other tools, and as the inspector indicated, the camera readers, the video surveillance is all part and parcel of the ability of this village to keep and maintain a safe environment. And thank you very much, Inspector, for sitting in for the commissioner. And obviously, the Ryder Cup has been a coordination of any, every law enforcement agency, no matter what their alphabet is, they've been here. And thank you very much.
You're welcome. I would, I appreciate you bringing that up. Of course, we're excited to have the technology. I would add that with the demonstrations in the festivals, there might be a use case. But I would also add that in times when we're looking for someone in distress, it could be along any, any number of the miles truly of railroad, or the Bird Sanctuary, or sumps, or any of the golf courses, having the technology to canvass that amount of area, we expect is going to be beneficial.
I just had one quick question, Inspector. I would imagine tomorrow night with the, I believe, pretty decent crowd that's going to be on Seventh Street, will there be more police presence between there and the hotel and?
Yes. I mean, every person that we can get here will be here. So, you know, I guess we're all kind of wondering what kind of crowds we're going to have, but there is no question that there'll be enough police presence.
Excellent. Thank you, sir, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Talton?
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. Fire Department does not have any items on the formal agenda, but I have a plethora of updates to provide. First, I would like to thank everyone who attended our annual 9/11 member and ceremony at the Village Green. We had a very moving tribute, and we've already begun planning for next year's 25th anniversary. So thank you to everyone who attended that event. Upcoming on Sunday, October 5th, the Fire Department, in partnership with the National Fire Protection Association, we're going to host our annual Fire Prevention Day. The event begins at 12:30 at Fire Department Headquarters. We encourage all residents to attend for fire safety. This year, we're proud to highlight the Fire Prevention Week campaign of Charge into Fire Safety Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home. Obviously, more and more, we're using more batteries. There are a lot of concerns with them. So we'll be going over some fire safety topics. We'll have demonstration set up, a uniform inspection, and the ability to ride the fire truck, plenty of education opportunities. Next, you may have seen recently, we've received our $100,000 grant from Executive Bruce Blakeman, as well as Legislature Drew Frey. That's going to be used towards a new SCBA air compressor to refill the bottles we wear on our backs, along where our bathroom renovations are nearly completed. So we're looking forward to having all these new updated projects done. And lastly, on Sunday morning, the Fire Department was alerted to a house fire on the east end of town. Initially, we got a report of smoke in the house. Crews confirmed that we actually had a basement fire. Thankfully, the sole occupant who was home at the time was awoken by his smoke detectors that was able to get him out of the house safely. We're happy to report there were no injuries. We did have a firefighter partially fall through the floor due to the extent of the fire, but luckily Assistant Chief Roper and Police Officer Irizarry were there immediately to pull that firefighter out from the hole. I'm happy to report that he was okay afterwards. So happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Chief, I got a, just a couple of quick ones for you. Number one, obviously, thank you as always. You guys are a huge part of the village in keeping us safe, and we appreciate it. And I know the board feels that way, and so does the rest of the village. So thank you, and thank God that that family were okay, and the firemen were fine, too. So thanks so much on that. When do you think the project in the main firehouse will be complete in regards to those renovations to the bathrooms and the washrooms and everything else that's going on? I know they have good progress, but where do you think that's going to finish?
If I was to put it at a percentage, I would say we're about 80% there. All that's left to do is the flooring and the appliances, and one minor adjustment to a, creating a door for the large items of equipment that we're going to be placing into one of the rooms.
Terrific.
So floors are done, ceilings are done, they put up new sheet rock. It's, it's a great project that's almost completed. We just got to wait for a couple more items.
Terrific. So you think realistically by the end of October?
I will be, I will be surprised if they're not done by the end of October.
Terrific. And one last thing, how's the new, how's the new fire truck?
Fire truck got put to work, and it's working beautifully. So happy to report that.
Great, great. Thanks again, guys.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for the presence at the homecoming parade, and you had three fire trucks there. We have the antique one. Was one of the trucks one of our new ones?
Yes, yes. So the antique, obviously, is from 1932. And then as well on that, the fire engine is obviously from 2025. So you can see from the oldest to the newest of the fleet that we had.
That's great, three fire trucks. That was great. And also, I want to thank Andy for having goggles there in the parade, as well as library, to have the tables and the friends of the library also being part of the homecoming celebration. That was truly a community event, of course, led by the schools. Thank you.
Well, it was, that was a spectacular day on Saturday. The weather was fantastic, great crowd on Seventh Street, and I've never seen the stands in the football stadium as full. I think there wasn't a seat available. Kids outside, they had games. It was just, it was just one of those magical days. Thank you very much, Chief. I'm going to break form here for a second. I'm going to ask the young woman who knows more about the library than the library itself, if that makes sense. If it doesn't, I apologize. But Colleen Foley is here to give you an update. They've had a spectacular few days with regard to its activities tied to the Ryder Cup and other things. Thanks.
Hi, good evening. I just want to thank the village board for all their support, and we've been putting to good use of the library. And I don't want to steal Trustee Torino's thunder. We shared a report, so I'll just go through it quickly, if you don't mind. Third Space, the Third Way Space Project, which is our marketing and re-imaging project. We just got some more new carts in. We're moving books around again. It's designed to attract patrons and increase our circulation, and there's going to be more staff training next week. So we're well underway with that. The project is going to be an actual study, and there's a submission to the American Library Association, which is hopefully going to be accepted next February and presented nationally. So our social media appearance, we have our new website, which is well underway with our technology team. We hope to have it up and running by possibly October, but definitely November. So there'll be a whole brand-new look. Our Facebook page will also change. We have three accounts. We're combining them to one and linking to Instagram, and that should be up by this weekend. Celebrating the Ryder's Cups, the library has been very, very busy with that. We, just this week, we have 74 golf programs and 17 other kinds of programs for our patrons who are not as interested in golf. It's a total of 91. Tuesday, we launched our mini golf in the lower level. Great success. The groups of four had approximately 15 minutes to complete the course. There's nine holes ending with Mario Golf on the screen.
That's great.
Each hole was a theme, so Hole 5 was a tribute to the Friends of the Library. The, if you look at the noodles, they're made out of pool noodles. And we want to thank the Recreation Department for the golf clubs. Good use. It says GCL in the middle of the golf theme. And today, or yesterday, they launched the pre-K golf. So in the last three days, we've had over 200 children from the ages of 3 to 14 participate in the golf. It's quite something to see a three-year-old swinging a golf club in a classroom. Wednesday and Thursday golf will continue. Friday, there's a hole-in-one contest, and it'll last as long as we have prizes. Saturday, there's a golf lecture with Les Wolf Sports, and Sunday, there's the all-time legend of Bagger Vance movie on Sunday afternoon. At Homecoming was a great day. We had over 700 patrons go in our doors. And on Tuesday, which was the first day of our, we had the kids home and golf, there was over 700 kids and parents in the library that day as well. September of '24, we had 11,440 people through the door. September of '25, as of yesterday, we had 1,274 patrons with five days left. So each month, and I have stats from others, but I won't bore you with all them, they've been averaging either par or 1,000 to 2,000 more each month.
Fantastic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. And we'll go right to Mr. Gary Fishburg, Council.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have anything on the agenda.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate that. And now Ralph Swazi, any updates or anything to add, sir?
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees, residents. No, Mayor, I have nothing on the agenda. There is a Board of Trustees item here, which I'll just call out. Board authorization is requested for the Garden City Police Department to incur overtime as needed. The Garden City Bird Sanctuary's haunted hikes beginning Fridays and Saturdays from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. during the four weekends leading to Halloween, October 3rd through October 25th, for a total of eight evenings. They've requested that the Garden City Police Department assist with traffic control during these times. The only other thing I want to say is that tomorrow, in preparation for the festival, we're going to be closing Seventh Street from 6:30 to 8:00 in the morning with the assistance of the Police Department, so DPW and Parks and Recycling clean sidewalks in the streets for tomorrow night's festival.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Swazi? Thank you very much. Mr. Hill, so what we'll do is, we'll, I'm sorry? No, we, no, I guess that's right. You know what we'll do? The Deputy Mayor has suggested to me that Mr. Wilton, because what we'll do is we'll turn over the mic and have the presentation and whatnot when we speak with Andy. So do you want to come up for an update? Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. Happy rusha shana to those who it applies to. Homecoming, hooray, hooray, hooray. That's the best way I can describe it. I mean, it was certainly the best one, you know, since, since before COVID. So if I forget anybody or I forget anything, please forgive me. I'd like to reiterate how much fun it's been getting ready for the Ryder Cup. I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, understood.
So I'll give you a quick of what's going on quickly. Most of you know this already. Tate is open. I've met the Regional Vice President. Their expectations is that this may, so their three highest producers are in Boston, in the Boston area. They believe this one will rival them. That's their expectation. That's their business plan. So far, I spoke to them today. They said they're on a roll. Things are going very well. Bear Naked Bakery, again, I'm amazed that they're doing as well as they are, and they're happy. And I'm amazed at the number of kids who are, or adults that have celiac or nut, or gluten. It's pretty amazing that they're moving. Wayne's, as we know, was moved and opened up. Luigi's, the Italian Ice Place, has become a hit. My only concern is the kids running across the street. It is, it's, it's, it's something that we have to look at, because, I mean, on Friday, it was something, you know, that, thank God, that they watch and they push the button, and they think pushing the button, you can just run. But it's something we have to address. Bengo Bowls, we had a ribbon cutting. Some of you were there. There's more in the queue coming up. There's a med spa going to Wayne's old location, and upstairs, there's a Pilates going, and just so that you understand what's going on. Noema is now Milo, M-E-I-L-O. He has just hired a liquor licensed attorney, so we know it's going to take about 60 days. He didn't hire a liquor licensed attorney from Nassau County. He hired the guy used in Queens. Hopefully, that doesn't delay it a little bit. People keep asking me, there's, next to Once Upon a Dish, one door down, there's a vacancy. That's becoming a jewelry store. Okay, so there's a guy that owns a jewelry store on the South Shore that's moving a location here. 1051 Franklin, that's been closed for almost 11 years, is now marketing itself. It's called The Franklin, and it's 57 units, and it's going to be like a WeWorks. So that's the intent. And it is, if my memory serves me right, it is, who's marketing it? It is Malts Auction is the company, the, the company that they engaged all. So that's going on. Ryder Cup, I'll try to, try to pull this together as quickly as I can. Their Broadway Bound Dances, they're coming, so that's easy. Three Bands Golf Simulator, Golf Photo Booth, Mini Golf, Nine Holes, Facepainter Balloons, Twisters, Bouncy Castle, PGA Raffle Bread, Chamber Items Giving Giveaways, Balloon Columns, Beverage Sampling. Tap Room is an official sponsor on the PGA app. Okay, so they have the PGA coming to them on Friday, and they're setting up their, their golf simulator. But they're, they have all kinds of events going on with PGA people and everything. I know Leo's is doing things as well. I know that Boston Beer is going to be doing tastings and things of that nature. I believe there's going to be more Chamber members. This is important for us as a community. There are going to be more Chamber members participating in this event than any participation we've had in the event. Remember, our Chamber members are not doing transactional sales. They're promoting their business. But keep this in mind. We have 27 people who stepped up to the plate to offset the carry cost of this. This is going to be the most expensive event the Chamber's done, I think, in history. Okay, I don't know that to be true. But the good thing is, is that we've had, Marie was very successful. She's managed to make magic. She got donations. She's tapped every single little place on the internet that you can send magic out to. So I think we're fully aware, I think that consumers know that we're here. I think the residents know we're here. I think the businesses know we're here. Mr. Surgical Eyes over there, and I want you, I want to say this. I saw Ralph bending over, sacrificing his back, picking up debris on the street. So he should be commended for that. We have the children's art poster. They're up, they're up. The superintendent was very nice, the school, to send out a notice. So we tried to figure out, how can we make sure that the residents come to the streets? So from 8, from first grade up till 12th grade, she sent information to every, all the kids' homes. So when the kids opened up, there were, there were flyers and their things, and that's, et cetera. As I said, Marie did magic. DPW, REC, Building, Lees, ED, everybody's done a great job. Street does look, I wrote for the street, sharp and clean. It's the best way I can say it. It looks sharp and clean. My ending note here is Ryder Cup is set. It's going to be what it's going to be. There's no other way to do it. We have picked our Business Person of the Year for 2025, and it's a young lady named Caitlin Woods, and she's the Director of External Relations and Special Events. She's one of my board directors. And it's interesting because there was a little conversation about academia versus business. But every time I've called her, she's never said no. She's always said, let me see what I can do. So for example, we may get somebody that's a startup business, and they want to know if there's things they can do. We'll send them to her at Adelphi, and she'll sometimes coordinate whatever. But she's also a very big stimulus for the students to spend money at the community level. I don't know if you remember, but right before COVID, we had a bus, an 18-person bus coming from Adelphi to Capital One and going back and forth eight times a day. Unfortunately, soon as COVID hit, with Insta, you know, Uber Eats and everything, that, there was no longer any reason to do it, and we didn't pick it up. So anyway, we also have the Garden City Connect on 10/7 at Adelphi from 5:30 to 7:30. You're all invited. But I, but I think all in all, I think, I think we're real, I think the village is ready. Everybody here, everybody here deserves a round of applause. And I think as a community, I think we're going to shine. I know that other chambers have lightly reached out to me, not a lot. I did get 40 or 50 phone calls today from people wanting to know if they could get a Ryder Cup ticket. So I said, come to my office. Let me see what I can do. So that is it. I have to scoot. I have so much more to do, and thank you so very much.
Thank you. Thank you, John, very much.
You're welcome.
Very, very good report. So we'll turn it over to Andy. But folks, I failed to do this at the beginning of the meeting, and I'm just going to remove item four on the agenda, and we're just going to consider it on the ninth, our next meeting. I'm going to move it, adjourn it, and move it to October 9th. So if you could make a note of that, Kelly, that'd be great. All right. Mr. Hill, first the agenda?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. I apologize if I sound more nasally than I usually do. I'm dealing with some form of head cold or something, but we'll get through this. Recreation has now two items on the agenda. Number three is contractual step increase, and board authorization is requested to move Anthony Viglietta, who's an Assistant Park General Supervisor, from Step G at $84,230 a year to Step I at $87,495. from Step G at eighty four thousand two hundred and thirty dollars a year to Step I at eighty seven thousand four hundred and ninety five for assuming additional responsibilities once the nursery manager retired. Steve Barnich, who is our nursery manager, retired and instead of hiring another supervisor in that position, his crew kind of amalgamated into Tony's crew and Tony took on that extra responsibility. He's been doing a fantastic job working with those guys around the village, so I think that's thoroughly deserved. Uh, and under our word of bid, item number six, uh, board authorization is requested to reject all bids for the Cluit Hall stage and floor renovation. There's also a request to transfer twenty nine thousand six hundred and sixty eight dollars and fifty cents from tree management program to Cluit Hall floor and stage reno. And board authorization is requested to approve the Cluit Hall state and floor renovation to Milburn Flooring from Kopeg for a total of one hundred and fifty four thousand six hundred and sixty eight dollars and fifty cents on, on a New York State contract. Milburn Flooring, um, actually did the floor in the field house. Uh, they were able to submit a quote that was less than the low bid that we got when we put it out to bid. And was, we're very happy with the floor in the field house, so we know their work and we'd be very happy to work with them again to renovate the, the floor and the stage at Cluit Hall.
Excellent. And before you go on, is, is that it on the agenda?
That's it on the agenda, yeah.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hill? I, I, I did have a quick one. Um, just with the relation to number three contractual step up. So the um, the uh, what's the, the, what do we call it? So Mr. Viglietta uh, steps into a role and it sounds like we're saving a, what I was trying to get to, it sounds like we're saving some money from, from you're shifting around in that particular unit.
Yeah, so um, Mr. Viglietta is already, will stay in the same role that he's in, but instead of four people reporting to him, uh, I believe he now has eight people reporting to him. Because of that, there are some other moves that are in the works with uh, with a gentleman who works below him, again, sort of stepping up to be his assistant. Um, and we've moved some stuff around. Um, it allows us to bring in a laborer, um, which we, we obviously asked for in the budget, which would replace Mr. Barnich, who retired at a, at a much substantially less cost. And uh, yeah, I think I can send the board, I, I sent the information over to Ralph with regards to actually how much the, the moves are saved in the village over the course of the year.
It's approximately twenty eight thousand dollars we're saving.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We like savings. Um, good evening, young man. Uh, I just got one easy one for you. Um, based on conversations we've had over there multiple times at Cluit Hall, um, just so the residents understand what we're doing over there. Uh, we're doing new floor and Marie doing the stage. Is there anything else we're missing in that boat? Uh, or am I on point there?
So we also are waiting for um, a quote for replacing the, the windows in the field house in Cluit Hall. Um, that's a separate project, but that's also, we're waiting to hear back from Milburn. Well, it's not, it's Milburn Flooring and Reno Construction. So the renovation side of it, they, they do the, the windows. So I'm waiting to hear whether they can find out on the contract or whether that would have to go to bid. Um, Giuseppe has very kindly helped me out with trying to source a uh, disabled access elevator to replace the ramp at Cluit Hall, which has seen better days and is becoming dangerous.
But this particular one, Andy, is, is just the, the
This one here, sorry, yeah. This one is ju, is the new floor and the new, and the stage renovation.
And the other things we've talked about, obviously, is the heating and cooling, which, which we're working on. Uh, certainly a better access because that old ramp is shot for disabled people being able to get in and out of that building properly. Uh, and then eventually, like I said, uh, the windows that are in there, vinyl windows, they're, they're certainly not good, but they're not horrible. The ones in the field house are horrible. Um, because again, the amount of heat loss and, and cooling loss are, are dramatic there. So, uh, okay, I just wanted to make sure that was the, the true scope of what we're proving in this. Okay? Thank you.
Alrighty.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for Mr. Hill? All right. So Mr. Hill.
All right, Ryan. Okay, so um, I was asked by the mayor just to put some information together for, for the residents who are here tonight and of course on Zoom and this will all be public knowledge. So I start off with a schematic for the turf field that we're proposing at St. Paul's. As you can see from here, um, it will be lined for, the white lines are full sized soccer. Um, the blue lines are uh, men's lacrosse and the red fans are girls' lacrosse or female, women's lacrosse. The field is actually wide enough that we would be able to line it ourselves with our, with our painting robot to be able to play soccer side to side. Also, we, we would have flexibility there if we wanted, if there's any requests for field hockey and, and the likes of that. But the permanent lines that would be going in on the field are for soccer and lacrosse. Um, you can see from here, it is, it's approximately thirty six feet from the edge of the playground to the, to the fence. And then another four to five feet to the actual playing surface of the outfield of, of the soccer. So it gives us a forty foot distance from the playground to the start of the, of the, of the field, the playable field. Uh, there is a four foot uh, perimeter fence that goes all the way around the field. In the area to the, on the right hand side, there is an area of, oh, sorry, let's start that bit again. There's a four foot perimeter fence the whole way around the field. There's a ten foot perimeter safety net in the, all the way around the field, apart from a twenty, sorry, a two hundred foot section on the right hand side of the field where you can see where the, the gray concrete pad is, which would have what they call a leaning rail there, which would be the spectators' um, area to stand and, and watch. Um, without having the ten foot fence in front of them, which we found in, in the past has hindered people's ability to view the sports that are going on. Because of that and because of where it falls, we also asked for an alternate, which we would go ahead with, of putting a fifteen foot high fence around the playground in the area that is exposed to, or kind of exposed to the field. Um, there's a reason for the, the safety netting. Uh, a lot of people have asked me, why do we need to, why are we putting safety netting up? Because um, we already use this. This, this field is essentially sitting on top of an already mapped soccer, grass soccer field. So people ask, why do we need safety netting? And it's an abundance of care from us. We don't want to risk anything with regards to balls flying anywhere around. Um, but also the demand for the lacrosse, to, for lacrosse to be played on here would make it a little, a little more risky if we didn't have that safety net, net in. Lacrosse are normally in the, uh, the northwest corner of the field, sort of tucked away, away, far away from the playground. Um, so with it moving here and we know that lacrosse is going to gravitate towards that for some of their practices and games. That's why we went ahead with the safety netting. Of course, a lot of people have asked us, why are we putting the field here? After many meetings with, with Landtech and, and companies before that and uh, and trustees and, and the uh, the local sports organizations, we came to the conclusion that this location best serves the needs of the, of the players. It's nearest, it's, it's nice and close to the comfort station and it's close to ample parking. Um, it's also in a position where we are not limiting ourselves with our grass fields, where we can map around it and we're not losing space that we can't, that becomes unusable. And it's also um, probably the most considerate position for, with regards to the residents on any side of, of the St. Paul's field for, for noise, for, like I said, for traffic, um, for potential future endeavors. Um, this is where we figured it would be the best place to put the, put the field um, to cause the, the least disruption. It also will help us with construction when the, when the company comes in to do it, that, that there's not as far to travel and, and damage other parts of the grass that we've, we've really worked hard on. We'll come straight in next to the playground in an area that's really not being used as a playable surface at the moment and take the construction trucks right across there without damaging any more of the uh, of the field. I don't know, Mayor, whether you want me to move all the way through and ask questions at the end or go slide by slide. Okay, Ryan, thanks.
Like you finish your presentation. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Hill.
So this is just the three D renderings that were sent to us by uh, Landtech. They had a, a guy come down and fly a drone over the field to, to take in all the, the aspects. Um, I, I think personally that this does a very good job of showing people. I know that we've had some concerns from questions at board meetings and recommission meetings and just conversations I've had in the, in the past of how this would change the aesthetics of the field. And, and of course, I, I'm well aware it's a three D rendering and it's, it's not real life, but I think these do a good job of showing that it doesn't look too out of place there. Like the, I think it, I, I think it looks great where it is and um, it, it does a good job of showing what, from different angles of what, what you can expect the fields to look like, what, what the field to look like once we get down there. All right.
That's fine. It's good. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, Ryan, you're good. Okay, so at this point, um, this is how the infill uh, works on the, on the field. It's been a hot topic of discussion and I have to hold my hands up here and say that in a couple of past meetings with the E B A, I was myself misunderstanding how the infill that we had chosen worked. My, I knew there was a sand aspect to it and I knew there was a rubber aspect to it. Um, I, and the way it is worded is that the rubber encapsulates the sand and I understood that to be essentially sand with rubber around it. As you can see from here, what actually happens is typically in a turf field, there's about five pounds per square fe, foot of infill. Two pounds of that is the sand infill on the bottom, which is used to weigh the, the turf down and help with drainage. And then three pounds of that is the rubber that sits on top of it, um, which essentially works as a um, shock absorber and means that the, the kids can play safely with, with falls and, well, the kids and the adults can play safely with falls and, and it's to mimic as much natural um, natural play as you can. So my apologies for my initial assessment, thinking that it was more intertwined, but it is sand than it is rubber infill. Like I said, it's sixty percent rubber, forty percent sand. Um, I, I brought for the board, if, for those who haven't seen it, this is what we currently have at Community Park. The same system, the sand infill that sits on the bottom and then the rubber crumb infill that sits on the top. Um,
And I think, uh, Mr. Hill, I think that the, the infill is, that is making its way around the, the dais up here is also going to be used by the high school.
Yes, and it's also the one that we're actually going to get. This one is, it has some lighter green bits in it. I can, and it's black. The, the one that we're going to go with is, is completely green. There's no black rubber in it. The green is a um, is it not a, I, I have it on the next one, so, because it helps me read off it. But yeah, so Ryan, go to the next one. Oh, not this next one. Ryan, go to one more and then I'll go back to that. Okay, so here's the, the crumb rubber infill. Um, I know there's been a lot of conversation regarding crumb rubber um, for the synthetic turf. Uh, there's some information up here that I'm not going to go through all of it, bits by, piece by piece. But basically, this information here lets you know what the C R M chill fill is, is used for. It's painted green with a water-based colorant. It's designed to converse water and reduce the maintenance. It's also more environmentally friendly. Um, as you can see from the middle part, it has extensive testing. Uh, the steel content in the fiber is less than zero point zero one percent. And the information on the right hand side is, is interesting. Like I said, it's a material comprised of a color-coated um, S B R rubber. Um, and it can be used exclusive or it can be used with sand. Um, they, the coating that they have on it now is, contains minimal dust and it's clean. Um, it's, it's definitely, and it's free of all heavy metals. It's definitely more environmentally friendly. And it's also cryogenically frozen before it is um, produced. I know that trustee Muldoon on a number of times in, in these meetings has mentioned how far the technology has come since fifteen, twenty years ago. And this is an example of that, that this rubber is still the same as what it was. It's still recycled tires, but it is screened a lot more efficiently than it was. And now it is cryogenically frozen, which allows them to break it into tiny smooth pieces as opposed to large rough pieces. And it also cleans it up and um, so this is, is an extra step. Um, when I was looking at infill with regards to the field, my, my primary focus for the infill was the cooling aspect of it, and that's why we went with the chill fill, with the green rubber that helps without the black rubber um, absorbing all the heat. All right, Ryan, go back.
Okay.
Okay, so back to a little bit of, I know this is hard to read and like I said, I'm, I'm, I will send this to the board and the board can post this out to the public. Um, but this is some information with regards to PFAS. There's a, a, a hot topic of conversation. Um, and what they are and, and what extents Field Turf, who are the company that provide Landtech's um, Landtech are the company that install it, Field Turf are the company that manufacture it. PFASs are, could be any sort of um, different chemicals that are used or, or found in not just turf field, fast food containers, microwave popcorn bags, candy wrappers, things like that. Um, and have been known to have potential environmental and health issues around them. Um, and what Field Turf go on to say here is, is the extent that they have gone to, to test their um, their products for those PFAS. And right now, they, they, low levels of some PFAS compounds are found, but they are below laboratory reporting limits. Um, and below what the EPA's recommended safe usage are. All of this goes down to the Field Turf are happy to go on the record to say that their, their product is tested and it is approved and it is safe for use. Um, so that, that's the example of, of they have a, they have a, a multi-page, I can't remember off the top of my head, but a, a document of all the environmental questions that people ask when we come to turf, to turf fields and um, and injuries to people. And again, we will, all of these will be available to the public. We've, we've done our research. And um, but I wanted, I know this was a hot topic and um, they, this goes to show that they've done the same thing and they've, that they are producing safe products. Um, yeah, so Ryan, I think there's only one more slide left. Oh, it came out. Old school. Um, so I just want, and then here's just some locations that currently use this rubber cram, this rubber crumb and sand infill system. Uh, we currently have it at Garden City Community Park. The field's there with the, the multipurpose field and the ba, baseball fields use this. Uh, the Garden City School District, the new, new fields that are going in at the high school are using this system. Adelphi University, Chaminade, Carey, Town and North Hempstead and Mitchell Field all use this system. Um, and in the last year alone, Landtech have installed three point seven million square feet of turf in New York. It's approximately forty five fields and um, on the East Coast, they've done over ten million square feet. And they told me today that approximately eighty to ninety percent of those fields that they, that they install use this rubber crumb sand influences system. Um, I think that's all I have. I'm, I'm happy to try and answer as many questions as I can. As I said, I'm not an expert, but.
So, so thank you very much and I would appreciate the hard work that, that you have put in and, and the research and your team and, and certainly putting this presentation together. At this particular time, we're going to pause on the turf field. And because it is no longer on the agenda, I am going to um, ask if there are any comments uh, from residents on agenda items only. Should we check Zoom? Nothing? Thank you, sir. Okay, so we will close that portion. Um, so we will move um, to the formal agenda, new, new, new business. And do I have a motion uh, to appoint uh, subject to your approval on the board, Ray Meyer to represent a village on the Western Water Authority of Nassau County for the balance of a two-year term, which is going to expire in April of twenty seven. Do I have a motion? All, a, any post? Nothing. Okay, good. Passes unanimously. Next, we will move to the consent calendar, noting, of course, that Next, we will move to the consent calendar, noting, of course, that there has been um uh there has been a uh removal and an adjournment of number four. With that understood and the case, do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar? All in favor? Gary's unanimously. Okay, thank you very much, folks. Now we will move to citizen comments on non-agenda items, and at this point, we will lead with any comments from citizens on the on the proposed plan. Um, would you like to say anything first?
Yes, sir. We're talking about St. Paul's turf field.
Turf field.
Okay, good, good. All right. So first thing I would like to do is to say thank you to Andy. I've been working with Andy for several months and several other companies, John Giuseppe, a true team effort to try and come up, including a lot of the heads of all the sports guys in the village, to try and come up with the best possible plan for a turf field. And again, first thing you got to understand is, okay, why why do we need a new turf field? The reason why we need a new turf field and everybody in the sports world is agreement with this is to be able to provide a facility that you can use multiple hours of the day, even when it's raining. Like today, we had to close St. Paul's, right, Andy? Because the rain, right? If you have a turf field, rain is no issue. It drains immediately and kids can run back and forth and they'll do almost zero damage to it. They do the same thing on a grass field. They destroy it and it becomes a muck pile and it's damaged for weeks and weeks, if not sometimes months, if a lot of damage is done. So it's the ability to be able to use a field almost three times more than a grass field. And then, like, we've made great improvements on St. Paul's in regards to the grass fields. By having this field, it will give it a a complete rest. And now we'll have a community park. We'll have the the turf field at St. Paul's. And maybe in the future, maybe not, and an additional turf field, because the amount of kids we've have in two thousand twenty five versus twenty years ago is dramatic. Uh, so there's just, we have more kids and we have the same amount of fields that are getting more and more beat up and overused, basically. So that's number one. Um, Landtech, the company we've landed on is probably one of the most reputable firms um in Long Island, if not New York, in regards to a large firm that does this all the time. And they're responsible for the majority of the fields that Andy had mentioned, Community Park, exactly the same material and field. The high school, myself and Mr. Finnern, Mayor Finnern was up at the high school today to see the brand new uh field, almost complete. And they're actually the final phase of the job. Literally, it looks like it's done, but it's not. What is it? They put in the uh the chill fill, which is exactly the same material we're talking about doing in St. Paul's, which is basically you know, um recycled rubber, uh but now it's been refined. In the old days, they would just cut it up into chunks of rubber, far larger, the smell of rubber off it, everything. So they've refined those systems over the last two decades. And now there's, you can look it up online. It's right there online. They show you how they make chill fill and what the process is to get it to a finished product and why they do it. But the most important thing to understand about rubber, why do they use rubber in 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 a turf field? People are like, oh, just because it's cheap and it's old tires or, you know, everybody's got a different idea. The main reason why they use rubber is as a shock absorber and basically so kids, when they're running on it, they don't destroy their knees, they don't destroy their ankles. Do they get injured? Yes, just like they get injured on grass. And there are certain injuries that certainly some people say might be more leaning towards turf fields than grass fields. But the reality is, why is rubber used? Rubber is used basically as a shock absorber, just like in a basketball court. When you run the basketball, there's actually little mini shock absorbers, rubber underneath the the basketball floor. So when kids and adults run in it, five or ten years later, their knees are not destroyed. They need that shock absorbage absorption. So that's why rubber is used uh as opposed to sand, for instance, uh in residential backyards, most turf they put in sand. Why did they put in sand? Because it acts as it holds down the turf. It's so heavy and dense, it holds down the turf. The water can get through it, but you don't care as much because there's not as much heavy, intense wear and tear on a backyard with kids running around versus a sports field that's used you know, almost every day of the week with a massive amount of uh of of people playing in that field. So those are the reasons why they use rubber in these fields. You know what? Now they are coming up with new technology. We have a piece of turf right there. Uh, what's the name of that turf again, Andy?
Do you want to hold that up?
Yeah, have a have a look at that.
Andy, thank you.
So if you see this, yeah, let me hand it up there, Andy. So this piece of turf right here, guys, came to us and this, we said to them, okay, what what are the options if you don't want to use infill? Is there an option? Can you do it? They said, yes, there is an option. They said this turf called pivot turf. It needs zero infill, right? It does need some sand. It's a lot more refined, like a white sand that goes in there that holds the weight of the turf uh and everything else like that. The problem with this is it hasn't been around for a long time and it's super expensive. The average field in this material is four hundred thousand dollars on average, depending on the size of the field, more than turf that's been used at, say, for instance, the high school, a brand new field, you know, four hundred thousand more just for this product. The other, but the issue is, when we talked to Landtech, we said, how many of these fields have you done? Tried and tested, right? Because we don't want to be the guinea pig. Certainly don't want to be the guinea pig. Uh, they said one. Okay, so that tells the story. It's new to the market. I've talked to two other companies. One guy said to me, Vinnie, do not be the guinea pig for this product. There's issues with it. Now, I don't know, there's nothing to back that up, but that was what I got from an independent source. No dog in the fight. Don't be the guinea pig. So uh this would be fantastic because we'd have to do no infill and a lot of people probably be a lot happier if we didn't have any infill. But the reality is four hundred thousand dollars more, you'd be the guinea pig. And also the type of surface it is versus, for instance, the new turf field that was put in at the high school or even the Warren Field at um Community Park, very different. So if you played on this and you played all around Long Island competitively as a kid and you came to this field, the ball would react totally, totally different playing on this surface than it would on some of the other surfaces that are pretty common around Nassau County and Suffolk County. So that'll just give you a little bit of education on the options we have. And then, you know, we're we're still looking at options. Everybody's like, oh, no, this is set in stone. As a board, we're still discussing some of the options in regards to the infill and some of the other things. For instance, I talked to some of the football guys today, uh field hockey. You know, we're going to try and accommodate everybody in regards to different teams that want to use this field, whether it's the markings or whatever else it is. Because again, that's what it's all about. We we don't want it just for one person or one team or or one sport. So again, we're still working through some of those. Um, but again, the most important thing is why do we need this field? Why why are we looking at this type of infill? The type of infill that we're proposing to use, which is called chill fill, but chill fill is just a term. There's other things that are very, very similar to chill fill. Different companies call them different things. But the reality is, it's it's uh it's recycled rubber, very refined, and basically painted with a green paint uh to seal the rubber and to uh to to have it a cooler surface, because one of the original huge complaints with these fields was the black rubber was so hot, it was like you could smell the rubber and you could certainly see the heat rising off the fields. So they've done a lot of different things. Let me go to the next one. There's another product out there called Envirofill. It's called Sand Envirofill. Uh, it's an acrylic coated, a microban infused sand. It's actually a brown silica sand from from Texas. It's another option, you know. Again, it's another option. It doesn't include rubber to the degree we're talking about with the other infill, but again, another thing boils down to cost. That is going to run an extra two, three hundred thousand dollars for that infill versus the chill fill, right? So there is options here. It's going to boil down to cost and just weighing out cost versus what's what's best for the kids and and the surface that they're playing on long term. So again, we're looking at all these options. That's what we're going to do for the next couple of weeks, get some more additional estimates on some of these products. And then, as a board, try to figure out what is uh what's in the best interest of uh of Garden City and what's in the best interest of the kids who are going to play on there. All right. Um, I've got multiple questions. Vinnie, why don't I, why don't we use all sand? Just use regular sand, no rubber. Why don't we use all sand? It's very, very simple. The the problem with sand, and you can, again, it's all out there. Uh, talked to two different guys today about it. I said, Vinnie, no way. It's just, it's not done. It's done occasionally, you know what? But it's just, it's going to be a bad idea. I'm like, why is it a bad idea? The biggest one, no shock absorbent is absorption. Uh, people will like, you know, they won't play in it after six months because it'll be that hard. It'll feel like it's rock hard because sand compacts, really, really compacts, whereas the infill, the chill fill infill is not. It's more spongy. When you walk in it, like we walked in today, you feel it? It was like walking on a sponge. And so the reason why you don't use sand on a on a high-traffic sports field is because of that. Simple as that. And also, maintenance-wise, sand will have to be redone on the field multiple, multiple, multiple times a year, which drives your maintenance costs way up. So that's the other reason why they will not do sand. Again, I've mentioned before, I have turf in my backyard. What's in there? Sand, right? Looks beautiful, right? But we don't, it's not, doesn't get that much wear and tear. And I don't want people running around doing four hundred sprints every day and ruining their knees and their hips. So uh so it's completely different than a sports field that the entire village is going to use almost every day of the year. So so in a nutshell, we kind of, there's cork out there, there's all kinds of other different products that we've researched and looked at. And the same way, it's just, it's not going to give you what you need for a high-traffic field. Hence, um, when another gentleman I talked to today, I said, how different than the Landtech does a lot up down in big firm up and down the East Coast, I said, how many of your fields are done with chill fill or or a similar product fields that you guys do up and down from Florida all the way to Boston? He said about seventy-five to eighty-five percent, which is very similar to Landtech, eighty to ninety percent. The vast, vast majority of fields are done in that product for multiple reasons. And uh that's kind of where we're at and uh we will continue to work hard. The goal here, again, is to is to have these fields done and ready for the uh for the springs, for the spring season. Um, that's our goal. And Landtech is an excellent firm, so uh we want to just try and get there and get them locked in and then make a final decision as to what we think is in the best interests of the uh the kids in the village in regards to the infill. And then accommodate the different sports programs, whether it's football, field hockey, lacrosse, soccer, you know, so we can do additional striping on top of the field versus the inlet striping. All right. So hopefully that information helped. I know it's a lot, but uh and when it comes to the location of the field, let's make this clear because I know we got George Salem, our lovely young man right here to my left. Um, the reason why we positioned that field there is for multiple, multiple purposes. I had one of the football guys call me tonight and say, Vinnie, where'd you guys come up with the position? Very simply, we we'd love to have tucked it in one corner and not be more central. But again, then you're away from the bathrooms, you're away from parking, and you're in the top of people's homes. And the last thing we want to do is be in the top of George Salem's homes or or uh anybody on on Hampton uh or any of those streets. We were trying to be respectful, you know what, but also we talked to the rec department in regards to the positioning of their soccer fields. And where it's positioned is actually to accommodate not messing up as many fields as we possibly can. There was lots of nice comments online this evening already, which is always lovely to read, criticizing that, oh, you're 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 going to put down two and a half acres of plastic. Here we go, you know, with the plastic term. Yes. Well, let me, let me, let me finish first. I'm almost done, almost done. Uh, so two and a half acres. So number one, yes, we are taking up two and a half acres, but this is a legitimate, full-sized field. This is not just a bunch of little fields you can play in, move around, everything else like that. It's a legitimate, we're building a beautiful facility. It's synthetic? Yes. Okay, will it have a four-foot fence around about it? Yes. But we're we're going to have to move with the times, but it's in the best location to suit parking uh the bathrooms, away from people's homes. And again, one more time, because again, we saw it online again this evening and somebody called me on it uh with uh bleachers. Oh, my God, there's going to be bleachers like the high school. I'm like, no, there's not going to be bleachers like the high school, but there will be a couple of little two or three-seat stands for, you know, thirty, forty people to be able to sit on and watch their kids play. You won't be able to see it anywhere from almost except for you're you're inside the field. And again, last one, of course, for you, George, lights, right now, I've said it and I've said it again, we're going to have a brand-new board next year, right? Right now, there is no plan to put lights on the field. Could that change next year, the year after, depending on a new board or a similar board? Yes, it could. Okay, that's it. Thanks, guys.
That, well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. And just to remind uh the audience, uh we passed a bond. We voted on a bond for this specific project in May to the tune of approximately one point three six million dollars. So that already has been taken care of, so that so the financing is there. Are there any other comments that some of the other trustees would like to make? Mr. Bruce?
Are we going to have an exam on what trustee Muldoon said because?
It has been recorded for posterity.
There is on social media what I refer to as the gotcha warrior in which they're trying to raise issues instead of address the issues. Now, this item was on the agenda for today, as it could and should be. However, this board is more transparent than any of the boards that I have sat on in the last eight years. That there is the ability for any one of the trustees to raise an issue, be respectful by all the rest of the trustees, and if there is, in fact, a feeling that more information is needed, we will not move in haste. Unfortunately, over time, all of us in our lifetime has probably seen the circumstance where something was considered to be safe until it wasn't. Roundup, Agent Orange, asbestos, lead, all of those were at the time considered to be safe. This board wanted to have more information in order that we could feel comfortable with our decision. So it was not forced upon anyone to go forward tonight, but in fact, is being adjourned until the ninth so that all the questions by all the trustees and all of the residents can be responded to. So in that regard, whatever you read on social media, it is not necessarily there to resolve or solve an issue. It is there as a keyboard warrior saying, I'm better than everybody else. But they don't want to put their effort in play. They don't want to work on solving a problem. They just want to put information out.
Thank you, trustee Torino. I'm going to move to the, on my right side, uh Mr. Mr. Rich?
Thank you. Uh, no, I think this is very helpful to show the renderings. I appreciate that. One quick question on the renderings, the the edge of the field is the white line, right? How far is it to the fence? Like, is there a lot of space when kids run off, like, get pushed off the field or is is there a standard four foot or whatever?
Yeah, though off the top of my head, I can't remember, but there is a set, like a a specific distance that they go to the to the fence, to the to the curb side. That is probably on there if it's not.
Looks
Rich, I I can
Kind of narrow, but
I can chime in on that one. We we left ample space for coaching on one side of the field and spectators on the other side, which is typical for this. And we ran it by about four different companies as to what the overall size of this facility should be, not just the field itself, but the overall size, including giving us a little bit of extra space. If 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 we did eventually in the future, wanted to add a couple of lanes of track around about there, do some modifications, not not in the near future, but in the future, to give enough of space between that and the playground. One of the other key things I saw online uh again, tonight, trying to scare people, no question about it. Oh, my God, uh, there there's going to be lacrosse balls going two hundred miles an hour over the safety net going five hundred feet in the air, then dropping straight down, and God forbid, some kid is going to get hurt. Number one, the field is is situated where shooting lacrosse balls at nets, unless you're just a complete maniac, okay, is north and south. The field, the playground is immediately paralleled to the right of that, okay? We're also putting up additional higher safety net, safety netting, so at a certain trajectory, the ball has to go into the parking lot. If it goes into the parking lot, who cares? If a ball is lobbed in, you know what? There there are still people in that situation right now. There's a lacrosse field there. They they play lacrosse in that area. So they're still shooting lacrosse balls right now with no safety netting around our playgrounds. So people who have that point, it's it's misleading and it's not fair to scare people like that. We're going to do everything we can. We've taken that into account with distance from the playground, projections, angle of netting, height of nettings, and everything else like that, to make sure as much as we possibly can, you know what? That, you know, the least or almost no balls go into that area, and if they do, they go in at a very, very soft trajectory.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, a couple of questions, clarifying questions. From my rea-, you can, by the way, you could spend hours on the internet reading about turf fields, the pros and the cons. You could literally do it, throw it into Chat G P T, you'll get a lot of information. We know it's a controversial topic that a lot of people have strong opinions on one way or the other. You could read about Ridgewood, New Jersey, and their challenges they had deciding on turf fields. We acknowledge it as a board that there's a lot of strong opinions on both sides. There's a very thoughtful letter in the Garden City There's a very thoughtful letter in the Garden City News the past week from some of the EAB members. And the board is very sensitive to that. We're reading the same things that you read on the internet as well. And we want to make sure we're doing the right decision for the residents, that we're providing a field that's safe for the children especially. It's our most precious asset in the village is our children. So whether it's the risk of injuries or the risk of the chemicals, et cetera, that's why we're very sensitive to that topic. I want to assure you of that. With that being said, um, I did some research and I thought I read, and correct me if I'm wrong, that New York State banned PFAS in carpets, including Astroturf Effective January first, twenty twenty-six, is what I read. And I was on the DES website. I wanted to make sure it was a pass law, not just a proposed law. Is that true, A? And if it is true, are we getting a guarantee that the carpet we're getting, the fibers are PFAS-free? We've spent almost a hundred million dollars trying to get the PFAS out of our water. The last thing we want is PFAS lying on our grounds at St. Paul's.
Just one, one quick note there, Rich. The, um, the effective date is the last day of twenty-six. Uh, or in, in theory, it'll be Jan. one, twenty twenty-seven. That's, that's what the language of the statute says. Now, I couldn't tell, someone informed me that it may have only been passed by the New York State Senate and will have to be considered by the legislature in the upcoming session. I couldn't confirm that.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's law, but certainly the way that I saw it presented, it looked like it was.
Okay, I'll forward to you what I found. Certainly, there's been laws, bills proposed to ban turf, but that certainly has not passed. But I'll see if I can find out about the PFAS.
The other two.
But maybe a moot point if they're guaranteeing that it won't.
Yeah, no, that's true. There, there are two other states, I'm sorry, I can just interject, that have adopted that kind of rule regarding PFAS, and that's the state of California and the state of Vermont. Those are the only two.
Do you have any scoop from your Land Tech?
Yeah, so I, I mentioned it to Land Tech today after you posed the question. And again, I can only relay what the Land Tech rep said to me. But he said that that wasn't an issue because the levels of the PFAS that are, uh, recorded in the land, in the field turf samples are below the threshold of what is, uh, of what would be considered by that law. And similar to you, when I researched it, I couldn't really find out, find those thresholds. But I told them that we would need a letter of authentication where they, they guarantee us that that is, is the case.
Right.
And I appreciate that.
And on that one, Rich, just so you know as well, uh, again, trying to be independent of a company that's trying to get work from the village, right? They're, they're, they're going to, you know, say, okay, yeah, we, no problem, everything is no problem. I also, myself, and so did Andy, went beyond that and talked to other companies who have no dog in the fight, who were never asked to bid the job, but companies that I know. And I just asked them, hey, you know, can you send me over what you, different companies, right? They're all different manufacturers, right, of this particular material. All of them have to provide now a letter of certification that this is independently tested, not by them saying, oh, yeah, we looked at it, it's great, it looks great to us. No, it's all independently tested, okay? And that's the only way they can operate, is to make sure that that PFAS level is below environmental standards and, and meets or exceeds that. And, and otherwise, they can't operate. Legally, they can't operate, and they have to provide our village and every other village and every other person that they're even the stuff that's in my backyard, we just did one, you know, a week ago. Same thing, the customer asked me, where's the letter saying this is good? They have to provide that letter saying it was independently tested and it's, it meets or it's below those standards. Uh, and, and that's how all these companies operate. Uh, otherwise, they just wouldn't be able to do it.
I haven't done a deep dive into this. Excuse me, but I think the law in New York was passed starting the end of twenty-six. California, I believe, passed the law, but it was vetoed by the governor.
Wow.
That's, that's what I, I'm like, again, haven't done a deep dive into it, but that's.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
After Kathy Hochul's booing at the Ryder Cup yesterday, imagine I do it too.
Now, the other, the other interesting thing with this environmental aspect, as you touched upon, is the infill. I didn't realize there were so many infills, cork and, you know, this green fill that we're talking about. Just to clarify the green fill, it is recycled tires that are chopped up and they're painted. Is that the, just to be clear, what we're getting, that, do they spray paint it with green? And, and does the paint wear off over time would be a question?
So Rich, I'll, I'll give you the, uh, the update on that. I have it somewhat memorized, but I'd rather just read it for you and make sure we're good on it.
Uh, yeah, it's not painted, this one, this is.
So you have two different types of rubber. The one you have in front of you is recycled rubber, right? T- tends to be, the majority of them tends to be from tires. And the whole thing back then originally was like, this is great, we're going to do something good for the environment. We're, we're not going to burn these, these rubber tires. We're going to recycle them into this material to go into turf fields. That was the whole idea originally, that it was environmentally friendly, uh, at the time. Uh, but, but back then, like I said, they just, they, they chopped it up into almost like chunks back then and then just put it in there and it was flying all over the place, coming home with the kids' socks and shoes. Uh, now, they've done a whole process where they've refined it into these tiny, tiny little pieces that are almost identically the same, cleaned it, washed it, taking out all the metals or the metals to the point where it's almost zero. Uh, and other things that are in tires from your car and everything else like that. And then they process it, they clean it, they do all, they go through these five or six different systems. And then eventually, yes, they basically painted and it's, and it's a water-based, the, the paint that they use is a water-based paint, which is ironic, right? You'd imagine if there's a water-based paint, that it would just wash away, right? You know, but it doesn't. Just like we use waterborne finishes on wood floors. Same way, it's actually, it's more earth-friendly and a lot of other things than the old polyurethanes, for instance, and all the other stuff that was used originally. But it's a whole process they go through, whereas originally when they did it, they just chopped it up into like eighth-inch pieces and pushed it into the thing and said, that's good, you know, so.
Okay.
And again, one more time, it's all out there to read online exactly how that process is done. And it's very interesting, and that's how they do it.
And that's our experience with community park that we're using chill fill? Are we using it currently or not at the community park?
Yes, the answer is yes.
And there's, and the paint's not wearing off, it's staying.
Paints, we were there today, it paints still on there.
Okay.
And the brand-new field that's getting done, uh, in the high school and eighty-five percent of other fields in Long Island, New York State that's getting done, are all used. It's not like we're reinventing the wheel or we're doing something that hasn't been tested. This has been around for a long time and, you know, that's the material they're using. And that's when we did the budget, we based it on the budget of what everybody else does that has been proven and tested over time, chill fill is one of those things. Even though it is rubber and people are like, oh, my God, it's rubber, it's recycled tires, I get it. Because the other form of rubber, just a little education, is virgin rubber, right? Which is like EPDM, right, that you can get as well. But there's pros and cons to using EPDM, which is virgin versus recycled rubber, right? But we'll chat about that afterwards.
What final question, though?
Of course, that's fine, that's fine.
I realize, like I said, there's a lot of different infills. You spoke to Land Tech and they said eighty to ninety percent use green fill. What, what is the other second-most common? If there's a community that's uncomfortable with this recycled tires, what are they suggesting is, okay, that the number two is this type of infill? What do they recommend in that regard?
The other one, this, this, the two, this, this, the several other ones, but the majority of them are either all sand, which is very, very rare. And it's, sand is done because it's economical to do. If you use regular sand versus silica sand, right? Two different price points, right? Because all this stuff costs a whole lot more money, you know? And that's where, where people are looking at budgets and everything else like that. So sand is one, but the other one that, and then when I talked to a couple of different people today, and they said, if you're not going here and you can afford to spend that three hundred thousand dollars more, you go here. And that is the one where I, where I mentioned there about envirofill, okay?
But then there's also.
It's basically a sand.
There's cork as well.
Yeah, cork, but cork is used like frac.
Tiny, tiny.
You know, because there's no, there's no consistency in the field, playing on that field versus playing on a regular field. And that's where you also have to, you don't want people, we spend all this money, all of a sudden, all the athletes go on the field like, oh, my God, the ball bounces seven feet straight up in the air or goes dead left or dead right. You know, we're trying to get also consistency of what we have at community park, the high school. These are all the same kids who are growing up in this village, going through from four years old all the way through to eighteen years old when they go to college. So we've looked at all these different angles. There is no perfect scenario. There isn't. We'd love if there was, it'd be easy, we wouldn't be here tonight. Uh, but we've looked at all these possibilities best we possibly can. And, uh, and we're going to continue over the next couple of weeks. I wish you to find to in that.
Uh, Ms. Verona?
Yeah, just on the, I think you called it the envirofill, which is the more expensive. How long has that been around and sort of what are the environmental reports on that versus?
Excellent, excellent. If, if you have the money, because just pause down the money. If you have the money, you can get almost the same basically performance from envirofill as you can from the, um, chill fill. Uh, even one is rubber and one is sand, and it's a different process. Uh, and again, but it's just, it's very expensive. And that's why people, majority of the municipalities lean towards chill fill.
Andy, Andy, do you, do you have any comment, Andy?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out through, through my own research and my conversations with, with the experts, that envirofill and the other options for cork and that, obviously, we mentioned about the, trying to keep the consistency in the playing surface, and that's why cork and, and repurposed sneakers are not popular because you don't get the same, you turn up and the ball bounces different, rolls different. There are obviously more environmentally friendly options, I would say. But even envirofill, from what I've been told, is not PFAS-free. It includes silica sand, that has its own issues with, with the silica causing an issue with lungs and respiratory systems. So like, like trustee Muldoon has repeatedly said, this was, this proposal was put forward based on the safest possible surface we could get within the budget. And, but we are, have been for weeks now, looking at other options as to where we could go. Now, what Land Tech would, would tell you is that if you wanted to have the most, the, the one that takes all the boxes, environmentally friendly, you're never going to get a problem with environmental, with the environmental issues, is this one, because it doesn't have any performance infill. It only has this that sits way below, you never see it. Um, but I would probably tell you that as well if I was trying to sell my brand-new product to a market where there isn't anybody who's using it yet. I actually, this afternoon, when I got home, looked up who's using it outside of New York. There's a number of places in New Jersey that have started to use it recently. I put a call in, it was five-thirty, nobody was answering the phone, but I did send a bunch of emails just asking. There was a soccer club, there was a municipal park, and I think there was a, um, a academic academy. I sent emails to them just to ask them, what is the, what has your experience been like on this? Because Land Tech will tell you this is the best, the most natural, it, this is how it, this responds like real grass. But I believe Met Oval in Queens, who are a soccer club, put this in. And there was a lot of disgruntled players because it's fine when it's dry. But then because it has no performance infill, when it rains, it becomes like a skating rink because there isn't that rubber for you to grip onto. And I think Land Tech kind of gave away that today when they said, oh, well, you can't play on this unless you wear cleats. You have to, like, and we have a lot of kids that turn up in turf sneakers, the ones with the little bubbles on the bottom. And they said, oh, no, it's completely different. You have to wear cleats to play on this field because it has no infill. So it has to get the studs down to get the grip.
Andy, you brought up some great points there, and that's the problem with being the guinea pig with this. And again, one, one another larger companies on the East Coast, I talked to them. And I just asked them straight up, would you, would you do that? You know, he says, Vinny, it's, it's a great product, but it's got some major issues. And do not be the guinea pig. When it comes to the sand, again, and a little thing, you talked about silica sand, right? So silica sand untreated, meaning raw silica sand, has issues, major issues, you know what I mean? Uh, it's used in construction, it's used here, it's used there, it's used everywhere. So what they do to, to fix that when it comes to this envirofill is they coat it. It's an acrylic coating. So they do coat the sand, and it's round silica. There's, there's edgy silica and there's round silica. They take it and they basically do acrylic coating on there. They also do a microbond on there, which is basically, they infuse this material into it where it stops bacteria, mold, everything else like that. So they're, they're, they're covering a lot of boxes when envirofill. And, uh, but again, there's, there's a substantial price to be paid for it.
All right. Arthur, and, and any other quick questions?
Yeah, just, um, I know that you've seen, i- if you try to do research on this and you look on the internet, they call this crumb rubber, which has been, um, you know, banned by certain places like Hartford, Connecticut, Westport, Connecticut. And I want people to know that even though this says rubber crumb, that it is this chill fill that they should be looking up, that that's what we are looking to put in. Look up chill fill and don't get it confused with this crumb rubber, even though it says chill fill, rubber crumb.
Thank you. And in respect of everyone's time, I'm going to flip it to the audience. Um, and are there any residents who have comments on this issue? Yes, sir. Mr. George, yes, sir.
I just wanted to start off by asking, why did you remove it from the agenda tonight?
Just so we could have all of this discussion that, that you've heard and, and the, the trustees. Yeah, I spoke to them today and they said, let's have a little more conversation. There are a couple more options to, uh, to, to consider.
If you recall last meeting, I asked for more time and you said it's a done deal. So you.
Oh, no, no, well, we, we have the, the.
But you said you, you didn't have time to get input from the residents.
No, I, I would never say that.
You did say that.
I, well, I will go back and look, but I would challenge you there, Mr. Salem, in, in a very big way. What I said was, um, we have the, uh, the, the budget ready to go. We were not going to go to a, um, to a survey and we were ready to move forward. Since then, we have done much more research on the infill. That's the only issue here. The issue on the table is not whether or not we're going to have a turf field, it's the kind of infill.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Also, I wasn't familiar with that New York State law. Could you quote that for me?
I, I do not have it in front of you, but it is part of the environmental conservation law. Um, my recollection is it's like chapter twenty-seven, title thirty-three.
Has nothing to do with banning turf?
No. Well, it, what it does is it includes turf in the definition of what carpet is. And they go into what the new regulations are going to be at the very beginning of twenty-seven regarding PFAS and any carpet.
So they're not considering banning turf?
I, I, no, because there are all kinds of turfs. Turf, banning turf is not on the table. It is strictly a conversation, Mr. Salem, on the infill.
Okay. Also regarding trustee Muldoon accusing me of being biased with my home abuts the field.
Never said you're biased because of your home.
Yes, you did.
No, I did not.
Anyway.
I still love you.
My, my home being abutting is the number ten reason why I'm fighting this whole turf idea. Uh, and I like to go through those reasons. Um, that it's, it's a health issue. As the, the aesthetics of this is very major, to, to put in sixty-foot stanchions that, uh, that would ruin the village, the, the beauty of that field.
Lights are not on, on the table. I, I understand your view.
But still, without lights, it's still ugly.
Okay, but you won't see sixty-foot stanchions.
What are they? I think Andy told me once it could be sixty.
No, no, we're, are you just talking about the lights or are you talking about?
Stanchion, which cut, which supports the lights.
No, but there's nothing to do, there's no construction, there's no.
No, but it's just the height, it's going to be further than the St. Paul's building.
George, one more time, right now, there is no intention of this board, right now, to put lights on this field. Is there a chance one day in the future with this board or another board, a year from now, two years now, they may entertain lights? Yes, there is a, a chance of that. Of course, there's a chance of that. But right now, that is not on the table, it's not up for discussion. You know what? One day, one day it may be, and if they do, lights nowadays are designed so well. Are there, are the tall stanchions? Yes, there is. But, you know, you go to different fields, they're there, you know? So, but hopefully that answers your question.
That'll be a fight for, uh, for another day, Mr. Salem.
Regarding the rendering that Andy put up, I don't find it fully satisfactory because it doesn't put the field in perspective to the, what the surrounding areas. Is this Rockaway Avenue? Is this Stewart Avenue? How does the field fit into, the, the new turf fit into the entire picture? Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, yeah. No, I do. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Vin, 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 just one, one second. Could somebody tell me how many acres are on the field sans St. Paul's eight acres? Is it forty? Thirty-eight. Okay, thirty-eight. This is a two-and-a-half acre piece of thirty, thirty-eight acres.
But how it's positioned, I can't get the perspective of.
Okay.
What's, what's where? How many feet is it?
George, can I answer that for you?
Hmm.
Did you, did you not meet with Andy and walk and did you, Andy, I thought you said you met with George a couple of times.
Yeah, but there was no, there was no. Yeah, but there was no, there was no, uh, location that I could see at the time we went. Don't you think we should have a?
We would be happy to take you out, George, we would be happy to meet you out there.
Well, I, I'm looking for a rendering, I'm not an architect or anything. The sports leaders are obviously biased toward doing this. So I don't think their input is totally objective. Uh, I, I know the village is very sports oriented. Also, it's mostly children that are going to be playing on this fields, right? Not, not adults.
Correct.
And, and they have to go to bed, uh, you know, at eight o'clock or seven o'clock, some of them, the younger ones. And are they going to be, will the parents object to the kids playing into the dark? You might think that's silly, but-
No, no, it's, it's not silly, but that, that again raises the issue of lights and lights are just not on the table, Mr. Salem. They are not on, you know, I can say it 18 times and I'll say it sincerely every time.
So there obviously won't be stanchions put up in the first phase then, right?
Correct.
That is, that is correct, George.
Okay.
And again, one more, just so you know, the whole idea of doing a turf field is that it can be used almost up to three times more than the same type of turf. So we're wear and tear, and also, believe it or not, a lot of kids love playing on turf versus grass. Sounds funny, but it's not. But the reality is, it's just to get another facility that we can get more wear and tear on and rest the beautiful fields that you see every day, so they can be in better shape over the next two or three or four years.
Okay, uh, also, did the EAB have a final recommendation as to sports fields, synthetics, turf fields? We have an environmental board, did they produce a report?
We did not produce a report, but what we did do is we had multiple sessions where we had professionals come in. Celia came in, Celia Peterson came in, we had some other people come in, we had Andy come in. And what we felt was that it was very important for us to try and disclose as much as we could about the different types of fill, infill that were available and the different types of risk. I would say the board is split and there was no recommendation going through it except for, and I think that Jessica and I were pretty adamant that this board fully discuss infilled, infill much deeper than we had before we put a vote out.
Okay.
Thank you.
George, if you go onto Google Maps-
Sorry?
And look at an aerial view.
Yeah.
You'll be able to have a perspective of what this field will look like because the lines are already in place.
All right, but those, those diagrams didn't show any of the borders.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just trying to say that if this is what you want to look at, if you go on Google Maps and you look at St. Paul's, you'll be able to figure out exactly what it will look like.
Okay.
And anything else, George?
Yes, regarding rental of the fields to outsiders, I don't agree with that at all. I don't think we should be in the business of bringing in other people so we can make a few dollars. I think that's not a good usage of the field.
I don't think that there's any plans to, to rent that field.
But it has been, it has been mentioned as a reason to do the whole thing, is to make $25,000 a year.
Apparently that's only been on the worldwide web and is not an opinion held by-
Was that ruled out, that we would rent out to?
It, it has not been voted on, it has not even been considered.
So it's not in or out now, is it?
I think it was mentioned at the EAB, right, Andy, it did come out.
But it was not mentioned here, George, just so you know, all right?
Yeah, like, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be something for the Rec Commission to discuss, which we, we continuously talk about our facility rentals and that, but that's not something we've talked about. If we get a new turf field, we haven't even discussed, we're obviously not going, let's get a new turf field so we can rent it out as soon as we can. We've not even discussed that yet, so, and that would be something for the Commission to discuss in the future.
George, I do want to give other residents an opportunity to speak.
That covers most of my concern.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the issue? Yes, ma'am, please state your name and your address.
My name is Celia Peterson, I live at 39 Spur Street.
Thank you.
My main objection is aesthetic, I, I just don't think it's going to look good. You're going to see this bright green that'll stand out from the natural turf. And you'll see the fence, which I, I heard a couple of heights, I wasn't sure, 10-foot, then 20-foot, um, can you?
Celia, the, uh, the main, the main fence, uh, because we, we saw it today actually up at, uh, Community Park. So if you go up to Community Park, there's this gigantic 10-foot, no disrespect, horrible looking fence. So we're just putting a four-foot low fence, which is the same height as the fence that goes around the playground. Again, it'll be there, but it'll be somewhat discreet. And then there is a, a black netting that again, from a distance, you, you'll see it, but it'll be very, very vague. It won't be looked like, no disrespect, like, like a prison cage around a field. It will not look like that and we're very conscious of that. Will, will it change the appearance of that section of St. Paul's? Yes, it will. But before the playground was there and other things that have been done at St. Paul's are very different than they were 10 years ago, 20 years ago, and so forth and so on, so, but I agree with you. Yeah, will it be a change? Yes, but we're trying to make that change as subtle as we possibly can.
Because it's in the middle of town, I think it will be a lot noticeable, especially to people driving by, people who come to the park for the natural turf fields and the playground. So I'm not, I'm not happy with the aesthetics of it. I mean, it's going to look like a big rectangle and it's a different color. I mean, the synthetic turf is a different color than-
Yes, no, there's no question about it.
Winter, it's going to be very noticeable.
We're building, we're putting a facility on, on St. Paul's, it's a synthetic facility, it's going to look different, absolutely. Is, is it going to look great to a lot of people, love it, some people won't. You know, there's part of me, I'd, I'd love to have all grass and leave it the way it is. But in today's day and age, there is a huge demand and need for a turf field.
Andy, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hang, hang one second, hang on, Celia, I'm sorry.
We were told by the sports field people that the, uh, natural turf was completely unacceptable, it was no good. And so I figured, let me go out and look at it. And I thought the, the natural turf looks fine. So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm just wondering where, whether we're being bulldozed by the, by the sports guys who aren't happy with natural turf, uh, I'm, I get confused.
Ma'am, I'm going to turn that one over to Andy.
Yeah, so firstly, I just wanted to say that the 10-foot high safety net is in removable sleeves, so we are able to take it down and put it back up and when we get adverse weather, we'll be able to drop it so it doesn't get damaged. So it's not a permanent fixture. With regards to the location and the aesthetics, as Trustee Muldoon said, yes, there's, it's going to look different. But the demand from the sports organizations, the residents in the Branstead and Carroll survey was that we needed more turf fields and we needed game-sized turf fields, specific to be able to play full-size soccer games, full-size lacrosse. And Branstead and Carroll also said that the best place to put it is St. Paul's. A full-size field doesn't fit anywhere else, it doesn't fit at Grove Park, it doesn't fit in the outfield of Field One at Community Park. We've looked at all these options, the only other place it could potentially fit was Stewart School, but then you have to get into an agreement with the, uh, Board of Education, which, all these reasons were why that location was chosen. And then as we've presented today, once we decided where it was going to go at St. Paul's, we did everything we could to be as respectful as we could to all the residents to put it somewhere to cause the least disruption, but of course, it's going to look different, it's, it's a turf field with a fence around it.
Okay, so when you say full size, that's intended for 13 and up, is that correct?
So games-wise, as I said in the thing, it would probably, I think it's 12 and up now that goes to 11 v 11 with soccer. Then, so it's the, the larger field is the soccer field, but we also have the option to paint going across, like we said, for 7 v 7 or 9 v 9. We currently have at Community Park, the inlaid lines, and it's, in my opinion, I've seen it not just at Community Park, but elsewhere, and it, it's really confusing. Permanent inlaid lines for lacrosse, soccer, football, 7 v 7, so we made that decision. But yes, the full, when I say full-size field, it would be the optimum size for 11 v 11 soccer, which lacrosse, girls and boys fits inside of that.
Because what I saw when I went out there was mostly girls under 10, you know, so I don't know if it's compatible.
They'll still be able to use it for practice, but girls under 10, you would probably be able to, in my opinion, split that turf field into six, have six practices going, even with no lights. If you go four to 5:30, 5:30 to seven, seven to 8:30 in the spring and in the summer, you're looking at being able to do 18 teams a, a day on there, which is huge for us, without having that repetitiveness on the, on the natural grass, destroying it. So, yeah, yeah, younger kids will definitely use it, maybe not so much for regulation games, but they'll be able to use it for practice.
And the natural light is pretty decent, I think, until November, right, end of November, it's pretty light. And, and December is very, very dark, but I, I don't think there is a lot of activities there in January.
No, yeah, so the-
It's really, really dark.
It used to be pretty much Thanksgiving to Easter that particularly soccer would stop. It now goes later and starts earlier, everybody wants to play more, but yeah, the, the, the seasons when we're going dark at 5:30, there's, there's not much practices going on anyway, which went, like I said, we'd be able to drop the safety net and essentially winterize the park.
Right, and I'm actually glad that Celia noticed, um, the improvement of the field condition because this year, we have worked very hard, Andy has worked very hard. And the board also supported with giving, um, funding. We did, uh, the pre-emergent and there was excessive seeding, right? Uh, we did more seeding than, than before, than previous years, as well as, uh, um, the organic, um, grub treatment that we did preemptively this year. Um, last year, there was a problem and we had to treat it afterwards, but this year, we, we took precautions there as well. And the, the grass absolutely got more attention this year, so we saw a very visible improvement. But even with the improvement, there is still a lot of wear and tear just because of usage of St. Paul's. So that is what we are trying to address. So there is one question, um, that I have, which is, um, do you think teams are the only entities who are going to be using the field? Can just like, uh, uh, like parents and their kids, if they are not on a team, do, do you have, uh, like open play or hours where they can use it? Like, how does it work? How is it working right now with, how does it work with the, at, um, uh, Community Park right now?
So Community Park right now is by permit only. So one of the questions that we've had in the Rec Commission meeting recently for, uh, across the whole of the village, not just for our turf fields or our, our soccer fields, is how we could start to include permitting for non-organized play. Um, one of the things that we had to look into is obviously when we permit Centennials, for example, to use the, the turf field, they have their own liability insurance, so we take copies of that and that's what we cover. If somebody just walks up and says, hey, I want a permit, I'm going to take six kids out there, we're playing, a kid gets hurt there. So we've got to figure out how we can have umbrella insurance to, to cover it. But it was something that we talked about, whether even basketball courts in the field house, when they're not being used, is the, the option to have residents be able to say, hey, I want to reserve the, the soccer field or I want to reserve the, um, the basketball courts. In, in my opinion, I don't see there's any reason why we can't move towards that. We allow people to reserve picnic areas at the, at the local parks for birthday parties. I think it would be great if you were able to reserve, if you were a resident and you were able to find times when the basketball courts weren't used or the, or the turf was not used and you could run birthday parties there, then yeah. But we will make, we have to make sure that the use of that field is, is responsible. It's not just going to be a free for all for everybody just to turn up and use it whenever they want. That kind, that lends itself to, lends itself to, we get calls weekly from lacrosse or from Centennials, hey, our goals were broke, we don't know who we're using them because we're trying to police that. And, um, that's why we only allow it permit only at the moment.
Right, I'm just thinking at St. Paul's, uh, you know, the grass field, everyone can pretty much have access to it before dark, residents. So being part of it, um, you know, even some, maybe some, I don't know, that's for the Rec Commission actually, maybe even some open play with someone watching there, um, just so, you know, children or people who are not on the team, they can still have access to it.
Well, I think we, we've discussed that and I think that's one of the tasks. And, and again, the Rec Commission is fantastic, a bunch of great people working hard as always, like any other volunteer group. But that's certainly one of the things, uh, they're going to have another four or five months to get to early next spring and certainly figure out, how do you maximize the, the use of that field for residents?
Yep.
And yet be able to do permitting where obviously you're going to need to do that and then be able to have residents use it, um, you know, in an open format. So it's, that's, that's going to be a task they're going to have to figure out, that's why we have that commission. And, um, I'm sure they'll do a great job and they'll figure it out.
Thank you, thank you very much.
I just want to address, a lot of things are in discussions. I think there is a sense, um, on social media and other places where everything is set in stone, this is then going to go this way or the other way. I just, you know, we are open for discussions, you can always email us, you can come to the meetings, we always let people talk. And, you know, it's always good to have our conversations and we're very, um, we're a, a very open board. So, uh, you're, you're welcome to, to talk to us and email us, let us know how you think, give us feedback.
Thank you, Trustee Ty. Are there any other comments on this particular issue? Seeing none, uh, can we, so I'm going to check Zoom? Can we check Zoom, please? Okay. All right, why don't we start with Rich Carrero?
Hey, good evening, everybody. Just about the St. Paul's turf field, uh, first, just quickly to commend the workers. I think, you know, they helped bring back the fields, I think they're in much better shape than they have been. So many thanks to all the workers who went out and, you know, have really helped rehabilitate the grass. I think, you know, Trustee Ty just said that the debate is open, but I'm also hearing that it's sort of closed. I mean, this is about the infill, not the, not the turf. I think it's, still should be a debate, still should be open. I'm glad it was removed from tonight's agenda for a vote and pushed back to October, but I think it should be pushed back further. The debate should be about whether we do this, whether we do it at St. Paul's, you know, might it be better at Community Park? I'm, I'm sure that's been explored, maybe it hasn't. Have we worked with the schools? Custer Park, I mean, there are other places in the village, maybe that could facilitate this, I don't know. Because this is the nose in the tent, right? First, it's this field, then the lights, and let me, let me predict and be on the record that there will be lights. Maybe there's not a vote now, but you've clearly used some very lawyerly language to say there's no current intention. When I hear that, that usually means it's going to be done later. You know, so how do you say lights are not on the table when, you know, again, moments later, you're saying it could be voted on a few years from now? And again, let me predict it will be. You, you've left open the possibility of outside rentals of the field. You know, whether it's $25,000, $30,000 a year, whatever, that's been left open tonight. The rendering shown, are those available online? I didn't see them attached to tonight's agenda.
The, um, no, that's, that's, that's correct, uh, Ms. Crowe, they were not prepared until late this afternoon, but they will be available.
Yeah, I mean, again, another problem, if we're going to vote on something tonight and we're just producing renderings today, I just asked to slow it down, I mean, I don't think that's appropriate. Trustee Torino, I don't know why we need the ad hominem, the keyboard warrior. I happen to believe I know the poster you're talking about, who is a highly involved individual, who's volunteered countless hours to the village. He might have even helped you get re-elected. So I think it's inappropriate to impugn a resident that's even just bringing up an issue, as I think you put it. Let's debate the issue, not the keyboard warrior, so I think that's very important. And I think it's a shame that the discussion of rehabbing St. Paul's itself, the building, this board has categorically removed facade as an option from public debate. I think facade might have given us 24/7 turf with non-offensive lighting, with little controversy in that regard, but it's been buried and, and I think shamefully, so that's another thing. And all this talk of plastic, paint, chill fill, rubber, acceptable levels of metal, chemicals, where now there is grass and soil, I mean, I see those pebbles all over my house after games. My kids are in every sport imaginable and the pebbles are all over the house. So excuse me and I think others for being a little concerned and skeptical when the government and salespeople tell me everything is safe and totally okay. when the government and salespeople tell me everything is safe and totally okay. Again, I'm pumping brakes at that point, just a little bit. And, you know, as a board, I think you've come a long way from organic field maintenance to chemical turfing. That's a big shift that's gone on in the past, let's say, five to ten years. And I'm, again, I'm gonna predict this won't end with just one turf field as we've started. You know, once you start, you know, again, you've opened the door. And Mr. Hill mentioned the placement of the placement of the field being conducive to future endeavors was the phrase he used. I mean, what does that mean? Does it mean bright lights where now there's like this beautiful rare darkness? You know, so, look, I don't doubt the need to accommodate our amazing sports community, of which I'm a very proud member, but have we given this enough thought and debate in the totality? And have we given sufficient thought to other alternatives? And I'll I'll just end with, does council have an opinion? I'm genuinely curious and asking, does council have an opinion on whether this is a this discretionary vote implicates the need for a SECR review?
He appears not to, Mr. Carrero, but thank you very much. Is is there anything else, sir?
Oh, I think that's more than enough, but I would like an answer on the SECR element. Not necessarily tonight, but I would like an answer on that.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Carrero. Next person, Mr. Eric, I'm sorry, I apologize, Kurt?
Yep, hi, it's Kurt Eric. I'm at AD Westminster and I'm one of the members of the Environmental Advisory Board here in Garden City. So just wanted to go over a couple of things that I heard tonight that are, and I posted some of them online in the the meeting, but I think maybe this is a better way to get them talked about. And I do appreciate the comments that the board was split. I think that's kind of where we are on what should be happening with the turf. I love the idea of people being able to play more and more, but we're spending like a decent amount of money and we do have the fields, the grass fields, I feel, in reasonable shape to be able to play. But on the chill fill or on the fill component, I think there's been a lot of discrepancy in what was described to us and then what we've seen and heard tonight. The sort of major advantage we heard of the chill fill was that it has the ability to reduce the temperature on the field. But unfortunately, only for approximately twenty to maybe thirty minutes during hot days. I'm sure everybody in this room and the parents know that on AstroTurf, if you have a daughter or a child like mine who plays a lot of lacrosse and you go to these fields, especially in the hotter months, you can have a minimum of ten to up to fifty degrees hotter on the AstroTurf. Rather than kind of doesn't even matter what the, doesn't matter what the fill is, whether it's painted or not. And my daughter was at a tournament this summer and one of her teammates had to change her cleats because they melted. And that's not hearsay, social media, like I was there, we saw. So it can get extremely hot. But so the question here on the fill that we're looking at, the chill fill, which which sounds great, but, you know, you water it and then the water evaporates. But again, it only provides a short amount of cooling, is the way that was described to us. There wasn't any mention in the original presentation that we had seen about the rubber being painted and covered. And so I'm trying to do a little more research right now on the substance to understand myself, how this painting or not painting or rubber crumb or painted crumb, how that sort of, what that actually is. Because one of the, one of the things that hasn't been discussed as well is that you may not go and detect any problems in a turf with any of the fill when it's laid down. But when that, when those items heat up, depending what they're made of, they will off gas. And so that's actually a pretty, pretty big problem. Like, you don't want your children, like if it's a twenty-degree winter day, maybe you don't care. But if it's a eighty-degree warm day and the field itself is a hundred or a hundred and twenty degrees, those chemicals that make up the turf, all of the stuff, can actually heat up and off gas. And depending what they're made of, it can be volatile organic compounds and others. Some of them are safer than others, but that is, I think, a question that we should be looking at as well. Another question and concern that exists is in order to have turf fields at the quality that we would want them, because we're talking about playing a lot. We've we've heard of the safety of our children, right? There are definitely more injuries to especially girls whose knees are more susceptible to ACL tears. But if we want to protect them, we have to maintain those fields. And so that's another component that we need to address and make sure that our community understands that not only are we gonna spend one point three million dollars on this, but we're gonna spend, depending on the company and how much it gets used, et cetera, somewhere in the ten to thirty thousand dollars a year to ensure that the field is maintained. Like, they're not, you don't put them down and you walk away. You you actually have to maintain them. Maybe it's less than you do grass. I don't know that necessarily, but they have to be maintained in order to maintain to maintain their playability and the safety for for the athletes. Excuse me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Eric. Is is there any final comment?
I think that that's, I could probably go on for quite some time.
I got that feeling.
I I will leave it at this. I do have some strong opinions on this. I have a certificate in sustainability from MIT and environmentalism. And so this is not something that you're just hearing a heated resident talk about. This is something that, in addition to my other work as a daytime employee at another company, I take it very passionately and I have studied it so that I can have these kinds of conversations about my community and my family and what goes on in it.
Well said, well said, thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you, Kurt. Kurt is on the EAB with us and it's always a very good conversation with him. We have really good discussions on the EAB. The EAB does have concerns about PFAS, you know, the cost, heavy metal, VOC, that's the volatile organic compounds, you know, the green space, chemical runoffs. We did talk about like injury, different things. So, you know, we are looking at the infill, like the different kinds. I think we're still the next, especially the next two weeks, we're really gonna spend a lot of time each as individually and, you know, like, look at some resources, do some research and to really understand the different choices and options that we we have. I know, you know, Andy also, thank you for the presentations to the EAB and, you know, this presentation that you just did. So the next two weeks, I think we're gonna do more, do more.
No, no, I know, no, we still have comments here. This isn't the end. Mr. Gray or Lee Gray? Probably Mrs. Gray. Is he, you're you're muted? Would appreciate if you keep your comments, once we hear them to four minutes, that would be great. Mr. Gray, are you there, are we able to get him or is he? All right, we're we're gonna come back to you, Mr. Gray, and we're gonna go to Mr. Orso. Orros.
Yes, good evening, Bob Orros, Grove Street, Garden City. Yeah, my question is, if these turf fields, do they have a life expectancy? And once they they reach that that limit, is there EPA requirements through moving the fields and disposing of the material?
Yes, there are lifetime expectations. Mr. Hill?
Yeah, the the one in the proposal, the from Lantec, has an eight-year warranty. Your life expectancy is ten plus years. The pivot turf, wherever it ended up, has a twelve-year warranty, so obviously a longer life expectancy. And yes, there are environmental aspects and regulations that you have to stick to if you if you are removing a turf to replace it with a new turf, then you have to remove them and dispose of them responsibly.
Thank you.
Can I ask a related, I just, I literally don't know this. So if if you get to fifteen years and it's it needs to be replaced, do you have to pull it up and put a new one in or do you replenish it?
You don't start from scratch. You already have all the foundation and the and the layers of fill. You replace and repair the the fiber, the carpet, so to speak.
Is it gonna cost the same as the initial installation or is it cheaper?
I I don't know numbers on that, but my understanding of it is it's definitely not as much as the initial one because all of this, all of this one point three million is is excavation, it's removal of topsoil, it's repositioning of irrigation, it's it's the foundations, it's the footends, it's the conduit and then and then it's the turf on top of that. So once you, once it gets past its life expectancy, you have to replace it. You don't have to do all that stuff again, you already have that there. You just put in a new carpet now, essentially.
And the yearly grooming maintenance is about you do it three times a year at like ten thousand?
It's just over eleven thousand dollars for the total. So and it costs us about nine hundred dollars for a bag of the infill, which typically lasts us the year. That's, that's three deep groomings from Lantec who come in and regroom it all. Our guys are also, we have our own equipment, we have our own groomers. We're used to maintaining the fields ourselves, filling low levels where where the infill has dispersed and we have to, we have to bring the levels back up to keep them safe. So again, that's another, with a different infill, we're then looking at new equipment and we're looking at training new staff and having to figure out like if if we were to go with an Envirofill or a Cork or a or walnut shells or whatever, then we'd have to learn. We then have more expense with the maintenance. And and as was mentioned earlier, some of those, some of the other infills need more than a three, three year, three times a year grooming, so.
Andy, just following up on on that one there. And then the point the gentleman made, which was very valid earlier, maintenance is critical. When you have a turf field, it's like anything else. You know, they do all kinds of different things to maintain it, power rush it and keep it. And again, if you if you do the maintenance, you'll get additional life out of anything, including a turf field. And one day, ten, fifteen years now, whenever it would be that that turf will be changed, the substructure and everything else would stay. You would just put new sandbags down, new carpet, and basically it's carpet, that's what it is, with whatever infill there is and you're off to the races again, you know? So that's how that works.
Mr. Orso, Orros, are you still there? Nope. Okay. Yes, sir. Do you do you have any other comments, sir?
Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, yeah. Obviously, there there's a certain warranty or whatever that the field should last ten years or twelve years or so. But it has to do primarily with the usage. If you have the field that's used a lot, the life expectancy technically should go down. So you might have to replace the field every five years.
We hear you, we hear you, thank you for that. That, but that that would certainly make sense and we do have a warranty. Is there anyone else that has a question there on Zoom?
If I may, Mayor, I have an answer.
One second. All right, seeing that there are no more questions, we have the final say by Counselor.
Yeah, there's a Rockville, a Rockville Centre School District case that went to the appellate division in two thousand nine, which states very clearly that the replacement of a field by an artificial turf field is a type-two action, which does not require environmental review.
Okay, we will make sure Mr. Carrero hears that, if he is still here. If not, we'll be in touch, Mr. Rich. All right, so at this moment, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, sir, Mr. Robert.
Good evening, everyone.
Good to see you.
Robert Hurs. I wanted to bring up the issue about healthcare costs for the village. So I brought this issue up before. I don't know what work the trustees have been doing on this and I know that you're going to be looking for a new person for the HR department, or at least I read about that. Now, to put all this stuff into perspective, the budget for healthcare for the village and the library, I exclude the water district and, yes, the pool, which are the enterprise funds, and the tennis court also is an enterprise fund. So it's a bit over ten million dollars projected for the new fiscal year. And that amounts to about fifteen, it amounts to fifteen percent of all of your expenditures. It's the second largest category after labor. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up, and I've brought this up in the past several times, and Rich Catalano also pointed out when we were going through the budget process about how the increase for the new year is very small. Including the library, it's only two percent. And healthcare costs are running well above that. And in Newsday on Tuesday of this week, they talked about how healthcare costs for villages and towns are going to, are likely to go up ten percent in the new calendar year for for plans that are in NISHIP, which is what the village participates in. So if you think about that, and I know the village runs on a fiscal year and the healthcare is on a calendar year, but if it goes up ten percent for a full fiscal year, it amounts to sixty percent of what your revenues grow up, grow out. If revenues grow at two and a half percent. So it's basically taking up all the oxygen. And if you add in what debt service grows at with the way our capital expenditure budget is going, there's nothing left over in terms of what your revenues are growing. So I don't know how you're planning on dealing with this. This would require the budget cap to be pierced. So I'm just pointing this out and I don't know how you're planning to talk to the, do the recruiting for the new HR person. Because, in my opinion, you know, the the person that you're trying to hire should be well-versed in terms of plan design for different healthcare plans. Now, I know that the village does not have a high deductible health plan, which could be married with an HSA. And for stuff that I foiled in terms of the Civil Service Employee Association, which is the largest union by number of heads that the village has, it already meets the requirements for a high deductible health plan in terms of what the deductibles are. And if the employees were properly educated in terms of the unions, you could probably come to some type of decent bargain in terms of this, because I brought this up before and few people know how, talk about it properly because it does get to be a bit complex. But if you look at a at a health savings account, it basically provides all of the benefits on a front end that a 403B or IRA provides in terms of being tax deductible on the front end. But it's not taxed, it's not taxed when the money comes out. So it has all the benefits of a Roth when the money comes out. So it's basically a huge free lunch if people know how to use it properly because there's no time requirement on when you, like you have an expense today that qualifies, you could take that out in thirty years and you could have it in the stock market. There's no requirement, you do have to take it out. You know, your heirs probably could submit the things after death, but there really is no requirement. So this stuff can all build up tax-free. So I'm I'm just, I'm bringing this up. And the other thing which I did write about in the report that I gave Mayor Carter Flanagan about a year and a half ago, which I know all of you have have copies of, that when you look at adopting a high deductible plan with an HSA compared to traditional plans, which the village has, it typically costs ten percent less in terms of the insurance cost. And a lot of that is because when you have a traditional plan like the village has, which has a flexible savings, flexible spending account, which has a use it or lose it feature. And when you have such an option, it tends to encourage overconsumption of healthcare, especially at the end of the year, because the employees are going to lose the money if they don't use it. So it tends to jack up healthcare costs. With the health savings account, you don't have to do that because it's evergreen. So the money, you can use it the next year or whatever. So as a result, the healthcare savings account tends to produce ten percent lower cost to the sponsor. So I encourage, and I don't know, I asked one of the trustees and they told me that they didn't know. I have not gotten any answer after that. Does the village have a benefits consultant in terms of helping the village come up with different options? In terms of, like, if I were presenting? different options? In terms of, like, if I were presenting this to the police, in terms of how much money you can accumulate before you retire in an HSA, in terms of what the tax arbitrage, arbitrage is, these numbers are mindblo, mind-blowing in terms of how large they are, in terms of numbers that I have come up with. I won't bore you, bore you with them today. Um, so anyway, that's just what I wanted to bring up. I encourage, I'm available to meet with any of you. I have a lot of time. I can produce financial analysis. Um, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to mention that we have had discussions, Robert. We do appreciate your input and feedback. It's been very helpful. Uh, we have had discussions with council as well. And we have the new HR person online. It'll be a high priority item. And your point about healthcare costs is correct. I'm hearing from our insurance broker in my company, potentially very significant increases for next year. So we're going to monitor that very closely to see what the impact is on the village. But it's a great point and we have to monitor it very closely.
Thank you. Just jumping on that back, Rich, we have the right guys with Vaughn, Rich, Jess, Michelle, everybody here. Uh, it's a big deal, healthcare, you know, I think everybody kind of knows it, but I run my own organization and we just switched and did a whole different thing this year, just completed. We had to do it because it just, you have to keep your foot in it. If you don't keep your foot in it, it's going to get out of control and it's getting real close to getting out of control. So I think the village as a whole, uh, I think we have the right squad here on the board to look at that and analyze it and find a way to think outside the box to at least keep our foot on costs. It's not even about just like, okay, well, you know, we just got to keep our foot in them. And because if we don't, uh, it's going to go through the roof. There's no question about it. That's where we're headed.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Are there any other comments on non-agenda items, broadly speaking? Yes, ma'am. No, you cannot. You do have to come all the way up and tell us who you are. Everybody knows who you are.
Althea Robinson, Garden Street, Garden City. Yes, I would just like to commend Department of Public Works Superintendent John Veroni for his very comprehensive report, uh, that he gave to the Menial Garden City Rotary Club at our meeting last Tuesday. I would say that everybody in attendance learned a lot more than they ever knew before about the extensive scope that the depart, and the challenges that Department of Public Works does deal with on a day-to-day basis. So thank you so much, John.
Now, he didn't carry on too long, though, did he?
Pardon me?
Did he carry on too long?
He was just right.
Good. Well, thank you. Thanks, Althea. Any, anyone else, folks? Any other comments?
Six.
All right, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor? The eyes carry it. Thank you very much, folks, for coming.